Good evening and welcome to the City of Garden City Council Meeting. It is Monday, March 18th, 2019, 6:00 PM. Time to start the Garden City Council Meeting. And I see some motions in the audience that can't hear well. So I'm going to ask Ben to look at the audio system and see if he can turn it up a little bit. Tonight, we have Dale Simmons from Jasper Springs Baptist Church. He's going to come and lead us in our invocation and I'll lead us in the pledge. Please stand.
Father, tonight, we're grateful that we have the opportunity to gather together. Lord, your word says that you created a government to take care of us and to meet our needs as a community. And Lord, I pray tonight for these men and women in front of me. What I pray tonight for unity and harmony as they work together to make us a great city. And Lord, I pray that we, as the citizens of Garden City, would cooperate and that we would do our best to make this place a great place to live for not only us, but also for our families. Bless us tonight. Give us wisdom as we make decisions that will affect our lives. And all glory and honor belongs to you. And we pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I'd ask the clerk to call roll.
Mayor Bethune.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Kickleiter.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Cody. Councilmember Daniel.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
And Councilmember Tice.
Thank you. It is customary, according to our charter, when we have a council member to be absent, that we have to make a motion to approve that absence and take a vote on it. So at this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the absence for Councilmember Cody.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Voting on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, at this time, we have a number of special awards that we're going to approve. And we got a couple of promotions. And I will say that after we conclude the fire department promotions, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to leave, we got some other business to handle. But I'm sure that some of y'all would want to go out in the vestibule and take some pictures. So it's perfectly all right for y'all to leave after we complete the fire department promotions. Chief Allen.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Officer Jennifer Meeks, if you'll please step forward. I'd like to take this opportunity to read this life-saving award commendation I've written for Officer Meeks. If you'll just bear with me, as I appreciate the work you've done. So in reference to this life-saving award, Officer Meeks, the purpose of this award is to acknowledge and recognize your life-saving actions on February the 6th, 2019. You responded to a suspicious vehicle call on Denise Street. Your investigation revealed the vehicle had been reported stolen. While waiting for the tow truck, you were approached by two young girls. The young girls advised you there was a small baby who was not breathing in an apartment nearby. You then ran to the apartment while radioing for EMS assistance. As you approached the apartment, you observed a group of concerned people. It was at that moment, a mother holding her one-week-year-old baby came outside. The mother was crying and screaming and informed you the baby was not breathing. You immediately took the baby from the mother. You quickly determined the baby was not responsive. The baby's lips were turning purple, had a weak pulse, and appeared to be choking on her own saliva. You asked for someone to get you an infant suction bowl while you began to administer CPR. You turned the baby over face down onto your forearm and immediately began to give back pats, turning the infant from face down to face up and also performing chest thrusts. Although the baby did not have an initial response to CPR, you continued to act as you were given a suction bowl. You then used the suction bowl to clear the nostrils and mouth area. The baby then let out a loud cry, opened her eyes, and started to move her arms. You continued to provide comfort as you stood by until EMS and our first responders arrived. The mother and child were then transported to the hospital for further evaluation. Your calm demeanor, training, knowledge, and actions are directly responsible for the saving of a human life. Thank you for your dedication and professional service to our agency. And I have a departmental coin for your actions and a new uniform pinned to represent this life-saving award. And I say, thank you for what you do. And let's walk to the middle and take a picture. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You know, as you read the description of her actions, rather than that being a police officer, that sounded like an EMT to me. Because it was textbook case, everything about a book. And I congratulate you. You're one of our fine Garden City police officers, and they make us look good and proud. Thank you.[373.49][373.49][applause] Next, we have a couple of promotions. This time, I'd call up Chief Maderas for our fire department.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Take a stand here again, show you the growth of the Garden City Fire Department with your help, city managers and everybody else. Today, we're here to promote two people that have definitely deserved the promotion with hours upon hours at Georgia Public Safety Training Center. Enough hours to become an adjunct instructors for them, not including the nine months of EMT and EMT school they've performed. And that's just their training of what they've done for Garden City, for the department and the fire service as a whole. These two people have been a huge help to get the department where it is now and also its future. So in alphabetical order, I would like to call them up. Lieutenant Anthony Brandon, Mr. Mayor, if you want. Sorry. General Order 3 dot 2 dash dot 2019, the following person is promoted from the rank of lieutenant, or promoted from the rank lieutenant to the rank of captain. Anthony Brandon. Hmm? Yes?
She's trying her best.
Second person, General Order 3 dot 21 dash, or dot 2019 dash 1, the following person is promoted from the rank lieutenant to the rank of captain, Catherine Michelle Johnson.[581.72][583.12][applause]
We are so proud of our public safety officers, our police department, and our firefighters. For those who don't know me, I retired from Savannah Fire Department. And I know how important promotions are and how they make you feel. In 1972, I was promoted to engineer with the fire department, which was a long time ago. And I can remember exactly what the chief told me when I was promoted. So it's a special time. I'm very pleased with these two officers. They do a great job. All our firefighters, all our police officers do a great job, and we need to continue to support them. So as I move back up to my seat, if there's anybody that would like to leave, now would be the time for y'all to leave, or y'all could stay and listen to what we're going to talk about. So thank y'all for coming. We had a great turnout. At this time, we're going to open up our meeting for anybody who would want to come forward and speak for three minutes. Is there anybody who would want to come forward and speak for three minutes at this time? Seeing no movement, we do have a formal...
I don't think they heard you.
Okay. And if you would state your name and address for the record.
My name's James Garrett, and I live on 218 Dean Forrest Road, which is also Highway 307.
Are you speaking in reference to the rezoning requests?
I am.
We're going to have a public hearing in just a few minutes for that, and that would be the appropriate time. So I want to open up the public here, and I'll open it up to anyone in the audience that wants to come speak.
Right.
Thank you. Seeing no movement, we do have a formal request to address council, and that is from the Garden City Housing Team. And Sharon Bethune is the co-chair of that, and she's going to give us a report for 2018 and what they have been working on.
Okay, Ron, so I'll just say...
This isn't our first time doing this hearing, right? Me and you.[849.82][849.82][laughing]
Well, I don't get up here that often. My name is Sharon Bethune, and I do co-chair the Garden City Housing Team. And we like to come and update the council on what we've done for the previous year. So I'm going to try to go over some of the projects that we did, most of the projects that we did in 2018, and maybe a few that we've already started for 2019. As you know, we've now, this is our seventh year. So we've done a good many projects during this seven years. And it's all because of really who you are and what you've done for the community of Garden City. So we're just kind of an extension of y'all and helping to promote the community and our residents here in Garden City. We're all volunteers, and we give our time and in service to our homeowners here in Garden City. Take the first slide. Back in February of last year, if you'll remember, we were required to go to two retreats each year to get more education on what housing GITCH teams are supposed to do back in their communities. It had been a year or two since we had been to one. So we were required to go to another one this past year to keep up our alumni standard. So we went to that, and we will be good for another two years before we have to go to another retreat, unless we really want to. Okay, Ron? Okay. The screen that you're seeing now, this is a home that was in the Sharon Park area that we worked on, and Georgia Ports was the volunteers for this particular project. We probably had about 25 or more volunteers that day to help us work on this home. I think the next one, that shows you a before on the left-hand side, and on the right-hand side is the after, where we've been painting the exterior of the home and replacing rotten wood that was on that particular home. And the next slide, Ron? Okay. That is a before and after of the same home in the Sharon Park area of what it looked like before we painted and afterwards. And I can't remember if we have another slide that may show the interior. There's the interior, and there's the group picture of the Georgia Ports volunteers and some housing authority, housing team that worked on that project. On the interior of that particular project, there was extensive damage in the bathroom. And so we had repaired that. And then you see the kitchen area that they're working on. They had to lay some more plywood down so that it would be sturdier for the homeowner to walk on. And so that's what they're doing, and that was a rough job that day for them. It was a dirty job, but they did it, and they did it very well, and no complaints. Georgia Ports is wonderful to work with. All of our volunteers are really wonderful to work for, or work with, but they worked really hard that day. Okay, Ron? This is three projects that we worked on in Garden City. The one on the far left is a wheelchair ramp that was worked on or built in Rosinaw Hill, and that was for a gentleman that was in a motorized wheelchair. And that was performed by the Wesley Monumental Methodist Men's Group that day. And they did a significant, great job on that particular wheelchair ramp. The one in the middle is actually one that Dawn and I worked on and another gentleman. That ramp was donated to us, and we used it on this project. And that one was for a lady over there in the Silk Hope area. And then the one on the far right is for a gentleman that had terrible access to his home on getting emergency personnel to come there. And Silk Hope Baptist Church helped us with that and rebuilding the actual porch and then the ramp itself. That was a really neat project to be worked on. Okay, Ron? This is an exterior patio coverage that had, and it's in the Chatham Villa area. And we, again, the volunteers that worked on this one was the Wesley Monumental Methodist Men's Group. It's a group of usually four or five men that come and work on our projects. And they're really nice men, and they work very hard and very diligently. The porch was rusted and leaking, and so they had to cut it off, and then we painted. It was pretty significant that day to figure out how to do that. And the homeowner was so very pleased with the work that we did on it. This is the home on Minus Avenue that we worked on. I don't know if you can tell in the before picture on the left-hand side, but that carport was sagging. And so we went back in and replaced a beam across it so that it would not, to help support it more. And there's, the next slide will show you, there was significant rotten wood on the exterior of this home. And so much of that was replaced to make it more energy efficient, because she also had a lot of damage to where the weather was getting into the home. And so it made it a lot more weatherproof for her. Okay, before I go into that one, let me, the home before that you saw on Minus Avenue, that was also, and I don't think I have a picture of that in here, but later on, that house was painted. Back in December, it was painted by the UGA students that come, now they've come twice, two years in a row with us. And it really looks nice now. If you ride down Minus Avenue or Third Street, and it's right there, Ms. Davis is so happy that her home looks so nice on the outside. The students did a terrific job. This is a home on Griffin Avenue, which is in the Sharon Park area. And on that home, we did siding replacement. The homeowner had had some old siding that had never been placed on the home. And she asked if we would try to do siding. We've never done siding before on a home, but we have completed all that we can on doing the siding. So it really looks a lot better. We also worked in, did some bathroom renovations and some painting on the interior, added some ADA handicap grips in the bathroom for the grandchild that lives there that's handicapped. And this was performed mainly from Clearwater Solutions, and I may get this wrong, GMC? Did I get that right, Ron? GMC volunteers. It was a fun day. We had them working on all those things, on doing siding, which probably most of us had not done before, and then working interior too, and getting doors painted and getting those things fixed for them. And the homeowner was very grateful that this was done. This was a project where the handicapped son had not been able to use the shower in there. And when we fixed a few things to make it more usable for him, he was thrilled to be able to go and take a shower in that bathroom again. You may or may not know, but one of the projects that we did for 2018 was to raise funds to buy lots in the Rosinaw Hill area. And in doing that, we were donating to Habitat for Humanity, because Habitat for Humanity had applied for a CHIP grant with the Department of Community Affairs. So that if we found the lots, they would use that grant to rebuild a home to move new residents, homeowners, into the area. This is one of the lots that the Queens Borough Bank donated the funds to for us to be able to purchase this property, that we then handed over to Habitat for Humanity for them to be able to build a home. We believe that we will, they will start building a home on some of these lots that I'm going to show you in September of this year. These are the other two lots, or two of the other lots, that we have purchased on Davis and Sixth Street and a Fourth Street lot. And you'll see on the last slide of our sponsors and volunteers that we have that work with us throughout the year. But we couldn't do things like this if we didn't have sponsors that donated to our team. And we have had some very willing partners to help provide this type of project to go on in our community. I can't say enough about our community partners and what they've done to get some new homeowners in our area and to provide some safe homes, because these are brand-new homes, for people in our Chatham County area. Okay? This is the new Habitat House that's already, is almost completed. That's also a lot that we purchased and gifted it over to Habitat. It's almost completed. I think they're going to try to move in April, but we're waiting on them to finish it, and then they will have a set date that they bless the house, and the homeowner will move in. It's a pretty little house. It's a three-bedroom, two-bath house, and it's just as cute as it can be. It's on Second Street, so if you get a chance, go by and look at it. It's really cute. Okay, these are, remember that we have received the CHIP grant, and these are the last two homes that are being completed right now and may have already been completed this week. So these are in the Chatham Villa area, and we're very grateful that we received the CHIP grant, that we were able to help many of our residents to get some of their homes renovated. This is the Cooper Center, and renovations are going to start, actually, I think in May is our first date. I think that we're going to do something in. But this was a kind of a corporate partnership between Habitat, between the housing team, and between the City of Garden City to get this grant that Habitat applied for with Republic Services. And they are going to do, well, I think the first thing we're going to do is replace mulch around the playground area. We're going to paint the equipment, the playground equipment. There'll be exterior painting, interior painting. The ceiling tiles are going to be replaced. The floor tiling is going to be replaced. All those are things that Habitat has done to put in, in the grant request, that it's going to be done to help to re-nourish the Cooper Center. We're thrilled about that. I'm thrilled about that. All right. Back in September, we had a free housing fair that we had at the Garden City Gem. And we have vendors that come in during that timeframe, and they're from banks, insurance companies, Department of Community Affairs, Home Depot, let's see, AAA, oh, the consumer credit, all things that are pertaining to housing needs that a resident, whether they're in Garden City or in Chatham County. It's offered as a service to them so that they can come and find out about their credit history, maybe how to clean it up, how to buy a house. There's classes that they can go to that provides extra credit for them to receive maybe some financial help that they may need to even have a down payment for purchasing a home. So that's what we did in September. We are currently putting another one on... We are currently putting another one on, on May the eleventh of this year at the Garden City Gym. And, um, hopefully I'll be able to give you some more information on that later on. But, uh, we're, um, booking our vendors now and trying to get some of the, um, public relations that we need to ask citizens to, to come. We're trying to make a better focus on the Spanish community now. We have a Spanish flyer that we're getting out in the public to, um, see if we can get some of them to come cause they want to be homeowners as well, um, and not just renters. So, uh, hopefully it'll be a successful one. If we just have a couple of people that get their questions answered, we, we find it, it's a success for us. Okay. I can't hardly read that. I've got it on paper. So I'm gonna tell you, um, the, the Garden City Housing Team also completed in twenty eighteen the windshield assessment of homes. And if you'll remember, that's where we go around and from our cars or the golf cart or walking. And we do an evaluation of the home that we're looking at. And we put it down on a sheet of paper, um, what may be defective, uh, what, if we find trash in the yard or, uh, under the carports, if there's not any house numbers on the homes. Uh, because that's a safety violation if there's no home, uh, number. So, um, that's all put, uh, in our evaluation. We use those to receive grants. The City of Garden City uses that same assessment, um, to put grants together as well. So that was completed this past year. That assessment will be good for four years. Other completed projects that I don't have, um, pictures for is, um, I gotta turn my page. Um, we renovated a, uh, bathroom and we, uh, included the plumbing replacement and tile replacement in a bathroom, um, that was in the, um, Woodlawn area. And then we removed old carpet, installed new ceramic tile, replaced a front door. And, uh, that had been caused actually from, um, Hurricane Matthew. That was in the Chatham Villa area. And, um, hopefully the homeowner will be, she had had to move out with her daughter during that timeframe, had been out for a couple of years. And so after getting this done, she's supposed to be moving back in now to, um, to a, a cleaner, um, less moldy, um, home for her. Future projects. We're continuing to work with, um, Coastal Empire Habitat for Humanity. Um, they're a great partner, not only for our housing team, but for the City of Garden City. They, they have a heart for helping, um, homeowners live in a safe, um, environment, um, like we do. And so we may still be looking for another lot. There, I know they have several lots that they're gonna be building on, but they're a good partner for us. Um, even today, uh, they partnered, they receive paint, a lot of paint. And so we have a house that we're painting this week. And, um, we requested a donation from them to give us some paint so that we don't have to go out and buy, um, five gallons of, of paint or more. Actually, I received two five gallons and then two, two, two gallons of paint from them today. So they're a good partner. It saves us funds from having to, to go out and purchase those things. Um, renovation of a bathroom. We are, um, currently working on that and the exterior painting of a home. Those are two projects that we're working on this week and have been working on now for a couple of, a couple of weeks. There was a, a lot of rotten wood on the exterior of the home that we've had to replace, some that we're not going to be able to replace because of the extensive nature of it, um, foundation issues. But the homeowner is very grateful for what we are doing, um, to help her, um, in her home. Uh, I told you about the twenty nineteen housing fair that we'll have in May. And we are currently taking, uh, twenty nineteen applications for homeowners. I have one, um, application at home that we will work on and, um, and vote on in our meeting that we have on Friday. But we are currently taking applications for, uh, twenty nineteen. These are, uh, most of our sponsors and volunteers. Um, and like I said before, we, we couldn't do what we do without this group of people and companies. Um, they're vital to what we do here in Garden City for our housing team. And I, I can't even, a thank you doesn't seem gracious enough or appreciative enough, but, um, but they have all my gratitude for what they do for us. This week, we have Owens Corn and Company coming. This'll be the first time they've worked with us. And we're supposed to have about forty volunteers coming to paint this house on Wednesday. I've never worked with forty volunteers before, but, uh, we should be able to get that house painted in a couple of hours, uh, with that amount of people that's coming that day. But, um, they're invaluable to us. Um, how can people help? Um, volunteers, I told you how important they are to us, so volunteering. Um, donations for projects, it could be materials. It could be your time and it certainly could be financial. Uh, to serve on our Board of Directors, we are always looking for people who would like to help on our, uh, board, um, help with fundraising. And, um, a simple, um, way of serving is, is, uh, serving a meal to our volunteers. And I'll, I'll just give a, a shout out to Jasper Springs. They're really good on helping. If I call, they will put a lunch together for our volunteers. Um, it, it doesn't seem like much, but it really is. It, it's a pretty big deal for me. Uh, we don't have to purchase it for one thing, and then they're always gracious to serve it. So, um, having them come to our site or we go to the church, it's, um, it's, it's a, it's a pleasure to work with them. So anything like that, if anyone wants to help in those kind of things, we're certainly always available and open for them to, um, to come and volunteer. This is our contact information, the three-one-three-eight-two-nine-five. Um, I know this is on TV. So if they need any services or if they would like an application, they can call me at that number. That's our mailing address, Garden City Housing Team, P O Box seven oh five three, Garden City, Georgia, three-one-four-one-eight. Our, um, uh, email address is gardencityhousingteaminc@gmail.com. So if anyone has any questions or wants to, uh, communicate with us, those are the, um, the numbers and addresses where they can do so. Now, that's all my presentations. So if y'all have any questions?
Questions or comments?
You do a remarkable job.
Good job.
Well, it's not about me. It's about this team and we have some very good volunteers. So many that are staff, um, and council. So we thank you.
Thank you. This time we have a, uh, public hearing. PC one-nine-zero-five, rezoning request, Old Dean Forest Road, receipt of public comment on a request by Bob Burdell, applicant to rezone Lot two, two A and two B on Old Dean Forest Road from P C T two A to I one for desired land use as warehouse operations and truck trailer parking. This time I'm gonna open up this public hearing and I'm gonna call Ron Alexander up to the podium to give us an overview on this request, please.
Evening, Mayor and Council.
Evening.
The case nineteen oh five was heard by the Planning Commission at the March twelfth meeting. Uh, the case is to hear a request to rezone three parcels located on Old Dean Forest Road. Um, all three parcels are currently zoned P C two. Uh, the request, uh, the petitioner requests to rezone all three parcels to an I one zone. Uh, the properties are to be combined with a larger parcel in the rear, a larger forty-six acre parcel. And, uh, to be further used from there for a warehouse, truck yard operation. And that's, um, pretty much the scope.
I have a couple of questions. Will the warehouse operate twenty-four hours a, a day?
It's believed that it will operate twenty-four seven, yes, sir.
And what is the size of the warehouse?
Uh, just under a million square feet. Uh, there's a total of two, two boxes planned. There's no specific plans, uh, received by the city at this point.
Okay.
But it's been discussed at, um, close to a million.
And a couple of concerns that I have. One is for the, um, trailer park there and the noise that this operation would generate. Because we have another, um, issue over on twenty-five where we have a truck terminal that's adjacent to some apartments. And I think our police chief gets numerous calls about that. So what would be put in place to try to buffer that noise?
The city ordinance calls for a, a buffer between residential use properties as, um, in, uh, adjacent to industrial properties. And the buffer requirement is pretty significant. Um, it, it, it states three hundred and fifty feet. And the intent is that you build a vegetated sound buffer as well as a visual buffer with that, with that, um, that width there.
And then the other question is, or two, got two other questions. One being the condition of that existing road and the width of the road, will any improvements be put in place on that?
Yes, sir. That, uh, road is not conducive to, uh, heavy traffic, although it's been used for heavy traffic over the years. Um, and it's been, um, explained to the petitioners that any improvements to that road would fall upon the, uh, developer. But it will certainly have to be developed to a DOT, uh, heavy impact standard.
Okay. Speak up a little bit. I think some of the ones in the back can't hear.
Um, it's been, um, voiced to the petitioners at this point that whatever routes to be taken there, that it'll have to be improved to a, uh, heavy DOT standard.
And then another really serious concern for me is all these trucks that are gonna exit on the Dean Forest Road and make a left-hand turn towards I sixteen. I see a lot of the, um, trucks that visit some of the gas stations along there. And they get in that center lane and then they're trying to cross two lanes of traffic to make that right turn. Uh, is there anything that's gonna be put in place that would alleviate that? Because I can see these trucks pulling out and they're gonna block two lanes of Dean Forest Road. And I see that as being a real safety issue.
That question has came up and I understand they're working on a, uh, resolution to that. Um, but, um, there's gonna have to be another access put to the property that, um, um, will, will alleviate that problem. And this will be done through a, um, a significant traffic study to let the city know how this is gonna be handled.
Does Council have any questions at this time? Thank you, Ron. This time I'm gonna ask anyone come forward who wants to speak in favor of the request. Anyone who wants to come forward and speak in favor of. You'd state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Good evening, I'm Terry Coleman. I'm with Coleman Company, Civil Engineering Company here in Savannah. Um, uh, with me tonight is Bob Burdell. Uh, Bob is, uh, the, uh, purchaser of the property. Um, and also, uh, Ben Whitley, who is here, who represents the, uh, the owner. Uh, also with me tonight is, uh, Greg Coleman with, uh, with Coleman Company. You know, and we appreciate y'all hearing this tonight. Um, we do feel like that we, we have a, a great project for this piece of property. There are some concerns, um, as, as we share those with y'all. You know, the, uh, uh, the property in the rear, approximately forty-six acres, is zoned I L, or I one, uh, light industrial. Um, the, uh, and the property up front that we are asking to rezone is, um, it is zoned, uh, um, the, uh, the, the P C two A. Um, it is a heavy commercial. And, uh, and what we'd like to do would be to rezone the front portion, recombine it with the, the back portion. That would give us approximately sixty-one acres of land. The, the, the plan for the property is to build warehouse distribution. It's, uh, an extremely, um, valuable asset to, uh, to the port, to, to the, uh, you know, the, 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 the community adjacent to the port. And, um, you know, this property was all zoned, uh, residential or, or some other zoning. I mean, you know, we wouldn't be here before you tonight asking. Uh, but the property is already zoned, uh, you know, and light industrial. There is a trailer park next door that, uh, has, you know, quite a few, uh, uh, trailer, trailers in it, uh, homeowners, uh, uh, folks who live there. That property is zoned light industrial and I'm, and I'm sure y'all are aware of that. So the ultimate goal, I guess, on that property at some point in the future would be to, to, uh, to rezone or to, uh, develop it as, as, as industrial. And, uh, we're certainly asking y'all to consider that, uh, in y'all's, uh, in y'all's opinions and, and motions. The, um, uh, we do, we have put together, uh, a site plan to, to, as we're moving forward through the process, to see what we would like to do with it. Um, and there's approximately eight hundred and fifty thousand square feet, uh, that we proposed for the property. It's in two separate buildings. And, um, but, uh, you know, to, to, to respond to, to your concerns that, that you laid out, which, you know, we, uh, we had a good meeting at, uh, Planning and Zone the other night. Um, and most or all of these were pretty much brought up at, at that time too. So, I mean, it's, it's certainly a concern. Biggest concern that we have would be, you know, we do have residences living next door to the property. Um, um, even though they're zoned light industrial, they are residential, uh, uses. Um, so, you know, noise is a concern for us. Traffic is a concern for us. Um, and, um, you know, what we'd like to do is try to find a way to work through this, uh, develop the property, uh, and provide, uh, remediation or, uh, you know, ways to, to, you know, to operate adjacent to this community. Uh, with noise, noise is, is a concern. Uh, we've done quite a few of noise studies adjacent to, uh, residential, where it's been, um, like relevant to this, uh, we, we recently did one on Jimmittleach Parkway. Um, it was for the Nordic development, um, in Poole. Um, the traffic study revealed that there was more noise coming from the, the traffic on, um, Jimmittleach Parkway than there would come from the development of the, uh, uh, light industrial property as it was adjacent to a residential community. And we feel like we would end up with the same scenario here. Yeah, I'm not saying there's not gonna be any noise on, on the site, but I think what we'd be looking at, we would be looking at a, uh, quite a bit, uh, a, 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 a very close comparison to the traffic, uh, or, I'm sorry, to the noise coming from the traffic from I sixteen and Dean Forest Road as it would, or as it would from our, from our site. So, um, the, uh, the, the buffer adjacent to, um, to the residential, uh, for light industrial, um, uh, as, as, as Ron had stated, uh, you know, that buffer's three hundred and fifty feet. It basically renders this property undevelopable. It is zoned light industrial. Uh, the trailer park is light industrial. Uh, it wouldn't be light industrial if they, they didn't have plans to, to move forward at some point in the future. So, like, you know, we would ask y'all to, to please consider that as, as, as y'all, you know, look at this, uh, particular, uh, request. We do feel like that we can be a good neighbor. Um, I think, uh, uh, a, a small berm of some type with, with heavy, uh, vegetation planted on top of it would, would provide us with a visual buffer. It will help in some sound deafening. But again, most of that noise is gonna be coming from I sixteen. Um, there's, uh, and they're wide in I sixteen, so, you know, you're looking at, uh, additional lane. Um, there's, uh, and they're widening I sixteen. So, you know, you're looking at, uh, additional lanes, uh, additional activity at Dean Forest Road, um, which is the purpose of them, you know, doing the improvements there. Um, you know, the other night at, uh, planning and zoning, there was a lot of talk about, uh, our access to Dean Forest Road. Uh, Dean Forest Road, um, uh, we have, uh, been working with, uh, Bert Wall and his family, uh, for access. Um, they are negotiating, uh, negotiations with him, uh, that are going on. Uh, we are having conversations with him. Uh, we're also speaking to, uh, Pilot. Um, and, uh, we have, uh, we've been, we've been talking to them about them relocating, uh, because of the intersection improvements at Dean Forest Road. It would, uh, they're looking at possibly making a move and, uh, we're talking to them about another site, uh, further down Dean Forest Road closer to the port. Um, so, uh, that is a concern of ours. You know, we, we would much prefer to have direct access straight out to Dean Forest Road. Um, uh, we could line up with, uh, uh, Meadow Drive. I'm sorry, is that right? That goes into the, uh, the mega site. Um, and there could be some, I'm sure, considerations for, uh, signalization and that kind of thing and, uh, so that, uh, uh, so that we could make this work out, uh, so that we're, you know, we have good traffic and good access, uh, out to Dean Forest Road. I know there was some concerns about, uh, the, um, you know, the families in, in, uh, uh, you know, Savannah Pines, the, uh, kids who are getting on school buses and different things like that. Um, you know, those are obviously concerns of ours. I mean, you know, we, we can't be a good neighbor and ignore things like that. It's, uh, so if there were ways that we could work with the city for sidewalks, uh, for bus stops, for different things like that, that could, that could help improve, um, you know, the safety, uh, of these young families and, and, uh, and folks, you know, uh, pedestrian traffic, uh, you know, you know, we're on board to, uh, to work with the city to, uh, you know, try to mitigate some of those concerns. Um, you know, the, the, the project's definitely, uh, uh, you know, uh, something very desirable in, in this community. Um, it is a warehouse distribution site that is extremely important to our ports, uh, to even to, you know, the, our, our neighbors at Gulf Stream, uh, and different, uh, different industries here in the community. Um, aside from just the, the, the warehousing, uh, uh, impact that we're talking about, I mean, the, there's additional, you know, jobs and, and different things that will come along with, uh, with this development, uh, that will, you know, bring jobs to, to the neighbors in the trailer park. They will bring jobs to, to folks in this community and, uh,
Can you speak up a little bit, please?
Little bit louder.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, anyway, I was talking about, you know, the, the impact of the development. Uh, and I'll let Mr. Burdell speak, uh, to this a little bit too. But the, um, you know, the, it, it, you know, this, you know, eight hundred and fifty thousand square feet. I mean, there'll be quite a few jobs that'll come along with that. Um, and, uh, you know, and, and those jobs could be for folks who are, uh, within the trailer park, you know, the, and, and other folks in the community, uh, the coastal area. It's not just Garden City. But I mean, it, it would, it would be an impact throughout the, uh, you know, the, you know, the coastal empire, uh, folks who are serving the port and, uh, but, um, anyway, I mean, I'll be glad to answer any other questions. Um,
Are these spec warehouses or do you have a prospective tenant?
Um, I'll let Mr. Burdell answer that question. Bob, you mind coming up?
Uh, hey, I'm Bob Burdell, uh, the, the developer of this project or potential developer. Um, these would be speculative warehouses. We, we've, uh, been in discussions with a, uh, a handful of tenants. But obviously we'd have to, um, we'd wanna get the cart before the horse. So for all intents and purposes, it would be speculative warehouses. Uh, one thing I wanted to add is on the, the back building, talking about, uh, you know, backing up to the trailer park, the, it, uh, on the site plan, if you'll see on the back building, that is car parking. So you've really kinda gotta buffer the, the, the truck parking on the back building, uh, would be up against the interstate. So what you'd basically have is employees.
Say that one more time for me. You said the back.
Uh, the, the back building, the, what would, uh, go up against, uh, would be on the side of the trailer park would be car parking. So that would be car parking, correct. So that would be employee parking. Um, so that would be employee parking right here. And then there would be off, office space in the, in the front, uh, right up against the car parking. So most of your truck traffic would be on the I sixteen side and you'd have the, the, the buildings as a sound buffer between, for any heavy truck traffic. Um, I gue- the buildings would be the buffer between, I think it would really buffer the noise. Um, and also, also on there is trailer storage. We don't have a lot of trailer parking. So it's really, it's really more of, uh, we anticipate it to be warehouse where the, the product is stored in the warehouse and not a lot of just ex, extra trailer storage. So, I mean, the truck traffic will, will be to, you know, to stop at the warehouse, drop the, the load off and then, and then move on. But there won't be a lot of storage of trailer or, or maintenance of truck traffic, et cetera.
Any other questions?
Well, one of the things that came up at, uh, planning and zoning this night, and this is a site plan.
We hadn't seen that, have we?
Just like your map, it's just, well, that's the building. That's the, we haven't seen, what she's saying. We haven't seen the map like what you have in your hand there.
And that's correct. I mean, it's not a requirement of the, uh, zoning application, but to help everyone understand, you know, our, our goal to profit. If we want to bring along case, we need to do product to help everybody understand. But, you know, the way it's set up, we have the entrance coming in on the north side of the property, uh, which is adjacent to the, to the, uh, tow part. One of the comments that, uh, meeting the other night was, can we flip this down to the, to the lower side? So that the trucks are coming in on the, on the lower side of the property. Now, that is something we can certainly, uh, consider in the, in the site plan. What that would do, right now, the, the, the traffic would come in across the top and go down to the bottom of this warehouse. Okay, so you've got the traffic would come adjacent to the trailer park. What we could do, we can flip it. We can bring that traffic down across the bottom. So that truck traffic in and out would pretty much stay across the bottom all the time. There would be, this would flip. I mean, this would be on the other side, but then this would be down here. We would still have dock doors because it would need to be accessed by trucks on this side. But they would access the property coming in on the south side and then they would come back around to the top. That way it's not as much traffic. All tracks would come by adjacent to the, uh, trailer park, um, if we move it down. And here's, if we flip it, it would all be down the bottom side. And so what would be up here would be, um, employee parking. And then there would be some truck traffic, but it would only be the portion that is gonna access the dock doors on this side. And, and again, this is a, a preliminary plan. We know that, uh, you know, if we're fortunate to be zoning, we've gotta come back with a site plan to all look at and prove. And so the things would be, uh, worked out along with the traffic studies, the, uh, detailed signs for all of the needs for access allocation for proof. Um, and, uh, uh, whether that's signalization components or whether it's, uh, uh, a relocation access out to Dean Forest Road. Um, we realize we've gotta come back and, uh, and present site plan to y'all, uh, for your approval.
Other questions?
How many loading dots will you have?
Um, approximately two hundred and twenty-four.
Wow, okay.
That, that's spread over two buildings?
Spread over one.
Two buildings.
Two buildings.
And so it's, it's two sides of one building, just one side of this building.
What, what will you be storing there?
Most of it, we, we can't, we, we don't know for sure, but it will probably be, uh, product from the port. It comes from the port and it's, is staged here. And then from here, it's distributed around the southeast. But I, I couldn't tell you exactly what that product would be.
No, nothing hazardous.
No, nothing, nothing hazardous. It would be, we, we anticipate to, to have good, good tenants, nicely landscaped. I mean, what, this will be a first-class A, you know, class A-type development, uh, that's, that's a, that's an attribute to community. Um, but no, we wouldn't allow any, any, uh, hazardous material or anything that, uh, created a nuisance, um, to the, to the property.
I hate to ask this question, but I couldn't really hear you a minute ago. When the question came up about the buffer, did you say you would or you would not accommodate the three hundred and fifty-foot buffer?
Well, the, the three hundred and fifty-foot buffer would basically take up, you know, that much of the property. I mean, we wouldn't, we couldn't pursue this property with that kind of buffer. Um, and if this did not come zoned, uh, light industrial over here, we probably wouldn't be going out tonight asking for this. But, you know, one thing I, you know, it's always, please, consider the fact that we're only asking for this piece to be rezoned. The rest of it is already zoned light industrial. And this trailer park is already zoned light industrial. Um, not that that takes away any, you know, responsibility to be within there, uh, that's not my point. But at some point, you know, these folks are, are gonna have a light adapter to go on on this property. And, um, anyway, we would hope that, uh, that would be, um, consideration if we're actually able to move forward with this project with, with some form of a, I would say a small buffer or something. And, you know, what we'd like to consider would be, you know, a, a five, six, seven foot berm. The U.D.A. has complained and that kind of thing on top of it. It would provide, you know, buffer in between these properties. But they are like, like zoned. Obviously, if you understand that this is still being utilized.
Can I ask a question to the chief?
Other questions?
Can I ask the que- uh, excuse me, a question to the chief of police?
Yeah.
In regards? Chief Fowler. When it, sorry to put you on the spot here. I'm just still just trying to understand. It's been a long time since I've been down into this, um, area with the children, with the school buses and everything. And that type of truck and environment where the school buses stop today. That's not saying if they can work with school and changing. If they flipped and entered on the left side, on this side closer to I sixteen, would that still keep some of that tr- heaviest traffic away from the children? Trying to unload, playing on their bikes?
Well, as you know, in my experience, an accident can happen anywhere. That's always a concern. Uh, I'm not aware at this particular time that they drop, they load it on, on the main building.
Okay.
And it's all on Billis Drive. But I could be wrong. We could change it at any point in time. Uh, so I don't have enough information to say where, where everybody has to be, where to unload on Billis Drive.
So it's further back into, into, but the children would still have to go by on the buses and everything to accommodate?
Correct. But of course, any concern that I would have is, is being tried to get in and out.
Yep.
On the, on the, and they're gonna have those buses going out there.
And that was gonna be my next question. With the school buses and the truck trying to come out of the same intersection? Okay.
Thank you, chief. Any other questions? Thank y'all. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak in favor of the request? Anyone wanna come forward and speak in favor of the request? Jim, I need you to weigh in here just for a minute real quick because, um, I think the comment was made that the site plan is not a requirement of the rezoning request. And as we look at rezoning this property, there's a lot of unknowns. Could you speak to that and, and educate me a little bit about that process? We're gonna rezon a piece of property. We rezon it and then they're gonna make all these changes or they're not gonna make all these changes to accommodate our questions?
I think you have the criteria for rezoning in front of you.
Okay.
And your decision to rezone should be guided by those criteria. And after the property is rezoned, then there are site plan approval, which gives the planning commission discretion as to the type of things that may, they might consider and require the property owner to impose on that property. I can't predict what those are going to be.
Hmm.
But tonight, we're not approving the site plan. We're, we're approving a rezoning. And as I said before, you need to look at what you have before you as to what those criteria are because that is what you're, is gonna guide and govern your decision.
Thank you. This time I'm gonna open up the meeting for anybody who wants to come forward and speak opposed to the request. Anyone wanna come forward and speak opposed to the rezoning request? If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jeff Ansley. My sister, Michelle Ansley. And we own a construction company called Ansley and Sutton Construction.
Speak, speak, speak into the mic.
Is there any way we can get speakers turned on?
Say, my name is Jeff Ansley and this is my sister, Michelle Ansley. We own the property, which is under Ansley and Sutton Construction. It's what borders I sixteen when you're going up the ramp to get off on Dean Forest Road. We're right behind the Pilot, Michelle's station. And I guess the mayor had some real good questions. I got some pictures here. If I could give y'all each a set and y'all take a look at them? Or would you wanna?
Jim, is that all right? Jim, bring it on. Thank you.
I think you need to, uh, uh, give a copy of what's your, no, to the petitioner. I think they, they need to, yes, now, if you have.
Wants to sit back.
Why don't we look at it?
Don't be looking at it.
Looks like a mess.
I've got a journal on it, y'all. That's okay. Oh, you're fine. I understand.
And I guess one of the things, if you look where you got your zoning appeal sign, if you look at the garbage there, we have been on Dean Pars since nineteen seventy-five, I guess. And that's probably the most neglect, neglected road there is in Garden City. We have no running water and we can't get water and y'all won't furnish us water. So one question would, how would they get water to their site? And then another question would be the trucking. Like you say, if you look at some of these pictures, the semi trucks would just park their trailers and dr- drop them where I can't even get into my construction yard. And I'd agree, it does look like a junkyard, but we have not had much police protection at all. I would have radiators stole out my cranes. I would have batteries stole out. So that's why I did let it grow up. And now for the past ten years, you see what it's looking like with everybody around us. You know, at least I'm in confined. And probably back in two thousand and nine, between Garden City, Chatham County, and the DOT made us plant our bamboo. It made me pay out of pocket, myself and my sister, had to pay out of pocket to put up a new DOT fence along I sixteen and plant our bamboo. And back in two thousand and eight and nine, that's why we had a drought. I had to go out there every day or every other day and water it to get it growing. And now, just not saying I'm opposed to them, but we have enough traffic and I can't get to my place now.
We are wondering how many trucks a day would be coming in and how many trucks each night would be coming in. And we had concerns like y'all do about when you go out on Dean Forest Road and take a left on Airport Park Drive. It's what, maybe seventy-five, fifty, seventy-five feet and you have to turn left or right onto Dean Forest Road? That's all, trucks lined up will create a big problem. Um,
Anything else?
No, so, well, just like I say, even old Dean Forest is an old road. And when the trucks do come in there, there's no cul-de-sac where anybody can even turn around now. You know, it's just a single road going down. So, yes, it's been an issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Anyone else wanna come forward and speak opposed to the rezoning request? Say.
Was this one?
Say, no, you wanna, come on. I was gonna ask a question about how many trucks, but since you don't know who the prospective tenant's gonna be, I would think that would be hard to estimate how many trucks are gonna be used in that warehouse.
Well, and, and we will be, uh, uh, providing a, preparing a, uh, traffic study. Um, you know, when we get ready to move forward, if we, if we're able to, uh, get to the site plan. Um, you know, You know, we, we don't mind there being a site plan portion of this, and I don't want to go against what Jim's talking about, but sometimes it's easier for y'all to understand. And the things that we've talked about tonight, I mean, you know, if we end up with a vote of approval with stipulations that y'all are going to require certain things, you know, we're, we'd be happy with that. To answer Mr. Sutton's questions about water and sewer, the city does have sanitary sewer in the area. You have a sewer out front?
This pilot is on sewer.
Yes, sir. So, I mean, warehouse distribution is not a big user of sanitary sewer. Obviously, the big use is going to be water for fire protection and we know that we would have to put in our own tank, put in our own pumps to be able to provide fire protection, you know, for the facility. And that's a permitting process through the state and through the city. As far as a visual for what you're going to see on this piece of property, as Mr. Burdell stated earlier, they're planning on doing a very nice job with the landscaping, with the architecture. The building's going to look very nice. And we've talked about it earlier. I don't know if you guys have been in Center Point, and that's the style of buildings we're talking about. Mr. Burdell is the developer for the property that we just brought before y'all on Sunny Purdue, so we'll be moving forward with that project soon. And anyway, he likes his community and would love to be able to build some nice developments in the city that he and the city both would be very proud of.
Thank you.
I have a question. You mentioned Bert Wall's property.
Yes, ma'am.
What, how does that play into this?
Um...
Bert Wall actually owns the Shell Station somewhat for him. He sold pilot, he owns the property in between pilot and church, and then he owns a piece of property on the other side of the church. So, you know, we would, what we would like to do would be work with him to deal with first piece of property to accommodate access directly out to the corporate.
In which area would you, were you kind of?
Well, this is the church.
Yeah.
This is a wall that's pilot, so it would either be this piece or this piece.
So to the right of the church, if you're...
Possibly be here.
What's the road right there to the, if you're pacing the church to the left where you're talking about coming out possibly to the Dean Forest Baptist Church you were saying in your far corner, right there?
This is old Dean Forest Road.
Right.
I believe this is called Airport.
Airport Road.
Excuse me, we aren't voting on this tonight, are we?
No, we vote on it on April the first, April the first.
No.
Any other questions? Any, yes, sir.
I want to add one thing regarding, Mr. Sutton, I appreciate your comments. I can assure you that the traffic in the ingress egress will be, will be to a standard that will be sufficient and more than sufficient because not only do we want to be a good neighbor, but also the marketability to be able to, I mean, a tenant, potential tenant wants to know they've got safe access as well. So it's, it's from both sides. We want to make sure that we'll have good access that can accommodate employee, the employee parking cars and then also the trucks.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? At this time, I'm going to close this public hearing and, as I said earlier, we'll vote on it on April the first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Entertaining a motion for consideration of city council minutes dated three, four, nineteen, and workshop synopsis dated three, eleven, nineteen.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made in second, voting on motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. We go into our staff reports now, and first up is going to be Director of Planning and Zoning, Ron Alexander.
Planning and zoning builder report for February two thousand and nineteen. Planning and zoning, there were two cases heard by the Board of Appeals and no cases heard by the planning commission for the month. The planning department provided approximately sixty various combined acts of service during the month. The building department issued forty-two building permits, performed ninety inspections, performed seventy plan reviews, held approximately fifty in-office and on-site meetings, and provided approximately four hours of training associated with that. The fire marshal, we performed forty plan reviews, held fifty on-site inspections, and issued four fire protection-related standalone permits. Flood plane management, performed approximately thirty related plan reviews and performed approximately three hundred, oh, three hundred and thirty on-site inspections. As a result of those actions, all of the above actions, there were ten new businesses opened during the month in the city. And that pretty much completes the report.
Any questions for Ron? Busy, busy.
Yep.
Thank you, Ron. I got, you or Benny?
I am Benny Gooch, yes.
You didn't tell me that earlier. All right, Mr. Benny.
All right, this is the Public Works Department report for the month of February two thousand and nineteen. Public Works personnel completed eleven resident requests, making eighty-five work orders for the month. These included two thousand five hundred and eighty-five feet of ditch maintenance with tobacco, fifty-five miles of canal maintenance using the Kubota tractor, storm drains vacuumed out, none in the month of February, and then stormwater utility point repairs, none done in the month of February. All right, on the street side, seventeen thousand dollars of third-party street and asphalt repairs, shown some streets there where some work was done, about one thousand two hundred and sixty-nine miles of shoulder maintenance, dirt and gravel roads were scraped at Bazemore and Bazemore Park, multiple potholes repaired by staff, signs and markings, eight street signs were knocked down, replaced, one street light outage was reported to Georgia Power. Dry trash, five point two one tons were collected, bringing the total, we got fourteen point eight collected year-to-date for Savannah Regional Landfill. On the tree maintenance side, we had thirteen thousand dollars of true removal and tree trimming in the month. On the water operations and maintenance side, we had one hundred and ten service orders received and twenty-three work orders were handled. The crews handled a total of one hundred and thirty-three for the month. On the water side, those fifteen work orders are documented in the report. The water department produced about twenty-three million gallons of drinking water per day. We've got hydrant services, none shown for the month, water line services, three lateral repairs, one main repair for the water lines. On the water valve services, we had one hundred and thirty-two valves located, sixty-five water cut-on, cutoffs, forty-five reconnects due to delinquent water bills, and then forty-five water cutoffs. On the meter services side, we had forty-three city-initiated rereads and one customer requested On the sewer side, we had eight work orders that were handled, including two sewer laterals that were blocked, three that were repaired, and then three manhole services done. In the fleet maintenance side, we had sixty-seven vehicles repaired, bringing the total for the year to one hundred and twenty-three. I believe that completes the report for the Public Works Department.
Any questions for Ron? All right, next up will be the Police Department, Chief Ballard.
Good evening again, mayor and council.
Good evening.
Reports for February, we had two thousand four hundred and ninety-six calls for service for the month. We had forty-seven accidents. Unfortunately, one of those ended up being a fatality. One of the good news is, a lot of times you hear about juvenile issues and we had no juvenile arrests for the month.
Hmm.
That's always good. As far as traffic violations are concerned, we cited, whether we cited or gave warnings, we had one thousand two hundred and thirty-six traffic violations, eighteen DUI arrests for the month, and four hundred and ninety-six speeding citations for the month. As it relates to code enforcement, we had eighty-nine cases come into compliance, we had two hundred and eighty-four property violation re-inspections, we issued one hundred and thirteen notice of violations, we have four pending cases in court, and we tagged four vehicles to be towed, and seven of those were done themselves before we towed. As it relates to the municipal court, it handled one thousand two hundred and eighty-two cases. Eight hundred and fifty-six were actually handled for traffic citations or criminal cases because you have some that failure to appear and so forth. As it relates to our department overall training, we had approximately two hundred and eighty-two hours of training. We were able to get two officers certified in TASER, four more officers certified on the Intox nine thousand, which is for DUI testing, and three officers for RADAR, and four for LIDAR, which is also known as laser devices. And then, some items of interest, I was able to attend the chief's conference for training and the city had a service award ceremony in which both Captain Joe Papp and Sergeant Brian Childs were recognized for over twenty years of service. And we hired a new police recruit, Anthony Viegas, who will start the academy shortly. And we had a GCIC, NCIC audit, which we successfully completed. And that concludes my report.
Any questions? Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Next up is our Fire Department, Chief Maderas.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
This is the Fire Department report for February. In February, we had six fire incidents, one hundred and thirty-one first responder incidents, seventeen vehicle accidents, and two hazardous incidents. For department training, we had overall three hundred and thirteen hours of department training, which averaged about twenty point eight nine per firefighter. One thing we did kick off in February is the firefighter fitness challenge. Whoever loses the most weight wins, provided they follow human resources guidance. No cheating, because they will.
[laughing]
We had a firefighter, Hornick, attend structure fire control instructor in Georgia Public Safety. He'll be starting his packet to become an adjunct for them here shortly to get signed off so we can hold our own state burns here in, here in Garden City, or actually Port Walworth in the burn building. Chief Lewis is attending the monthly EMS meetings to discuss emergency responses in our area. He's also had other meetings with the Assistant Chief of Pooler and also with Hinesville Fire Department with the regional GFSDC coordinator for upcoming changes for training and how we have to maintain those training records. Our community relation activities, we continue to do with the senior center blood pressure check. I've been trying to work with the local schools to use the fire hose for securing interior doors for various, for various safety reasons. If something were to happen in a school, they could use our discarded fire hose that we no longer use to help secure the door. And looking ahead, we are going to do some stop, more stop-to-bleeds training. We just recently got it post-certified, so we could actually get any law enforcement hours of credit towards this stop-to-bleed training and the Narcan training. We're going to continue with the Fire Department fitness program and we're going to continue out to visit the Gould, Groves, and Mercer and Garden City Elementary to have our presence there and promote that fire hose. Any questions?
A question for the chief.
Good job.
Good job, chief. City manager updates?
No, sir.
We have one item for consideration. I'd ask clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution of the mayor and council to reappoint Pat Gunn and Ed Chapman to serve as voting members on the Garden City Convention and Visitors Bureau authority until their successors are appointed within forty-five days of the first meeting of the mayor and city council in January twenty twenty-one.
Entertaining a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
And Ron, this is just a housekeeping matter here.
Yes, to get these two folks reappointed to their current positions, already on the board.
Okay. We have a motion in second, voting on the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Is, I will see you after the meeting because I can't let you come back up and speak now. But is there any other business that needs to come forward to us tonight? I'd just like to say I had the opportunity to go to Gould School last week and do some reading to the fifth grade class, and I was very fortunate that I got a book that described being a mayor. So I knew a little bit about it. I was very impressed with the questions that some of the students asked because one student was very observant driving down Dean Forest Road and asked about what was going on with city hall, where all the trees being cut and the roads put in, so that was very interesting. And then I had a number of students talk about voting and how you run for office and what age you can vote. So it was very interesting and enlightening. Is there any other business that needs to come forward? Entertaining a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made in second, and we are adjourned.